Call, Potter. Lemon's to Platter Board Meeting for August the 20th, 2018. Okay, we have a public meeting, open public meeting. Let's get it to 6:30 for preliminary subdivision approval for Willard Street. Do you have a representative?
Good evening for the record, Bill Handy and Engineering. At our last meeting regarding this project, we talked about the three, some of the comments that came back from the DPW relative to their desire to only have one access out to Willard Street. We met with them and we talked about the logistics of how we could do that on the original plan. This was actually a road, so actually I think the road might have been.
Coke's River.
So they had a desire of putting the access road over here. They kind of worked it out that's where the best place for it to go would be. So we now have a single entrance, which would be the main entrance. This would be a gravel roadway with a gate on either end, which would have a, be locked. And it would have a Knox box where the fire department could then access that to open the gate. So it would either be the direction fire police emergency vehicles could get in there that way. By constructing it this way, you'd limit the number of main cuts onto Willard Street, which was kind of the desire that we had at one point in time with our project initial filing. And so this is where we brought that plan thus far. With it, we also submitted a letter that outlines that discussion that we have with the plane, or I'm sorry, with the DPW. And we talked about the dead end requirement. The regulations of dead ends should be five hundred feet from development all over. If you cul-de-sac from dead end does not exceed five hundred feet, so this loop road created. This is less than five hundred feet, this is less than five hundred feet, and this is less than five hundred feet. If that meets requirement. The other item was relative to the distance between the subdivisions across street. We got it with this configuration, we had 125, 125, and 125 here with the original road line. So this is how it was set up. So we had 125 feet here and we had 128 feet here. So three intersections real quick, but compliant. And that's one of the reasons why the DPW prefers this entrance is the fact that this would be 260 feet between the two main entrances. With this being emergency access provides secondary access into the subdivision. So with that, there would be an additional waiver that would be required because any subdivision with more than 20 lots requires two means of egress. So the second means of egress would be filled with the emergency access road. So that may be viewed as that that is providing secondary means of egress or that the board would rank a waiver because of the benefit of the secondary means of egress property. That would be something that we would deal with on more of the definitive stage. We also went through all the comments.
Excuse me.
Yep.
You speak up for the audience.
Sure.
Just to hand in. Okay, you got it.
We also went through the various comments that came back from the various departments. The board of health had a question about the road configuration with the existing house. That house is slated to come down as part of construction. Can the, can Willard Street handle the traffic with the definitive? Subdivision would be doing the traffic study for the project. Municipal water and sewer systems adequate, we anticipate that they are. We did have some discussion with that with DPW and they didn't really raise initially one way or the other, but they said when we submit it, we'll go into more detail on that. But appears that everything's fine with that. Building had no comment, conservation had discussion relative to vernal pools. Location certified vernal pool will be shown in definitive plans. And we're filing those intent with conservation regarding that. Right now, there's some certified and non-certified vernal pools up in this area here. So we'll be reviewing those with conservation, but they don't affect the layout of the subdivision or the lots. They should, they should work with what we're doing here. There's some trains considerations that we have to give to vernal pools when we're doing construction near them. There's really no buffer zone to a vernal pool except for within the wetland itself. So as long as we stay out of the wetland, we're through there, that's what we're planning to do. And we don't drain more water there by volume pre and post. Then basically definitely goes the requirement under conservation laws. So we have, we'll deal with that when we get into the, into the design plan.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Do you know what the criteria is related to a vernal pool in terms of installing utilities or any other infrastructure?
It would be the same as anything else.
Setback the same?
There's no setback to a vernal pool for utilities, no. In other words, the buffer zone for a vernal pool is within the wetland itself. So if you, if there's a vernal pool here, the wetland buffers a hundred feet. So if the hundred foot comes like this outside the wetland, then it actually stops at the wetland edge. Okay, so none of the upland has any jurisdictional requirement relative to buffering for the vernal pool. The second part of that is that when you look at the drainage, the pre and post development, we typically deal with peak rates on most of our projects, most development projects we do. We deal with vernal pools just talk about volume.
Sure.
So it's just a separate analysis thing to talk about. So we'll begin with that.
Okay.
DPW, as I stated earlier, recommended one road with Willard Street. So we met with them on July 19th and the resulting plans are from that discussion. We next went about the pump station, we also went there, we talked about that. The pump station is to build to save specs and the city would accept it typically. It is also an option that we may do a non, a non specified system such as E1 system on this one, on this project. So if that was the case, then it would have to be a homeowner association like they talked about. But if it's a standard pump station that's designed for state standards, then the city would accept it.
Does it come? Pump station, cash line, is that?
We have no access to it because there's land in between us and them that's owned by the city. So, and that's conservation from my understanding, so we have to deal with that. But I don't know if we can actually make it by there for the entire project. But we did say we would look at it with DPW once we're done with the base. Either way, if we can do gravity, great.
Right.
Okay, but in looking at the house locations over here, and if you drive out there, it'd be very different. First of all, we'd have to get an easement from one of these homeowners, okay? And, and the city would have to grant an easement over their land, which I don't think would be a problem. But then from there, physically being able to get by these houses to the sewer line, which is out here, okay? In the little cul-de-sac, that would be, it appears like it would be problematic. So we don't know the answer to that question, but we'll, we'll explore that, we'll be in the definitive phase.
So gravity would work for part of it, if it's possible?
I think gravity could work for all of it, if it was, if it would go that way. But there might be a couple of lots that might need some, because everything kind of slows down. There's a low point here, but it's not, this is relatively flat on the roadway. So we, it would, it might end up being deep, which then creates problems or difficulties getting through neighbors' properties and getting them, having them say, yeah, you can dig 15 feet below my yard without disturbing anything in my yard.
Well, that should be taken care of in the definitive anyway. Just looking at the options that might be available.
They talked about looping the water main through the subway property, through the city owner's property. What we did instead of doing that was we actually are going to bring the water main around. Obviously extending it up this way, but then loop it back to Willard Street this way. So that this whole section is a continuous loop, so water will flow all the time. The only dead end sections would be right here, right there. The bonding, that's really a definitive, definitive item that is typical of that, of the. They talked about the granite curving, we did talk about that to them, that the only place granite curving is really required is that the radiative of the roads, intersections in with the cul-de-sac. So that's what we're going to do, they agree. Soil testing and all they refer for drainage, we said yes. Street trees per regulations, yes, we would do that definitive. Show the vernal pools and the flood plain. We're, we're, once again, on the definitive side, we'll deal with the vernal pools. And the flood zone, our initial review of this said that we're not in flood. I think the flood zone may be over more towards the lake than us. So, but we're going to take a look at that, but I didn't see anything that was applicable. We have to obviously deal with National Bridge through an ascent. And that was with the DPW. Fire department had no comments, police department had basically comments saying they did not see a traffic issue with the road development. So we, we intend on submitting, we intended submitting this point in basically to review the options that were available for the access, talking to DPW about what their thoughts were on it. This is the option that they would prefer. And as I said, there would be an additional, okay, I said 20, that's 12 lots. There would be additional waiver that would be required, Section 9R9, the regulation states, subdivision capable of the 12 blocks shall have at least two mean non-continuous street connected to the street or streets in or existing or shown in approved plans or with performance guaranteed in the file. So we had two originally. This layout appears to work better, same number of lots. And that would need to be, depending upon how the board looked at it. If this is considering, if the board considers that a second means of egress because you can physically access that and it's certainly maintained as such, then there'd be obviously access for that with the gates that could be construed as being a second means. But I want to make a waiver request in the document so that we're all, if we're thinking about whether it would be a needed waiver, necessary waiver or whether it is compliant.
No more question?
Sure.
That emergency access, is that going to be private or public?
That would be, that would end up being turned over to the city.
Okay, so would the homeowner association if there was?
It would be an easement.
Well, what happened, it would, we're on the, we're in the preliminary stage now. And that would have to be determined how we want to handle that. Our goal is to get roads, actual roads to be accepted by the street. And that's one of the conditions, the final conditions. And as far as that was concerned, that'd be an easement. And the question I had there for emergency purposes, would the homeowners have any access to them?
No.
Oh, on the code, just a place of fire.
Yeah, yeah, the way, the way that was requested to be set up was that, at least in our discussion, that that would not be an access for the general public.
Yeah, I want to ask, no, general public, no.
Right, it's for fire and emergency cases, exactly.
Okay.
What's the real reason to have a second? Fire employees can be able to go into about one road, twelve hours, you know?
Your, your regulations require that we have two means of egress, which is why we showed the road this way. Okay, after comments back from the DPW requesting that only one road be, one of them be eliminated and originally we had disconnected this way. But the idea of a, of an emergency access came up through those comments and this is where it would be. So I don't disagree that this development could be handled with the single access. But your regulations require that we provide two for us for waivers. We're providing the second one, be it emergency egress, and asking for a waiver just to cover bases.
Now, that's a full 32 feet in the front? Or 34?
I think this is still shown as 28, but I think that we had talked about making this 32 past the intersection then to go in back down.
Yeah, I think that's what we wanted.
Yeah, so I, I think that we had talked about that, yes.
Okay. Okay. Do you have anything else you wish to add? Okay, I'll open it to the audience. Do I have any questions or comments from the audience? Yes, ma'am?
Um, DL CMO, 25 Cloverly Road. I just have a general comment based on the prior hearing where you had discussed at some length about the access off of Prospect Terrace from Prospect.
Prospect Terrace?
Well, that there, there is a divider there and.
Oh, you mean like Prospect Terrace?
Like Prospect Terrace. And I just wanted to bring a couple of things to your attention. I think there's, is it 32 houses in this subdivision?
Right.
Thirty.
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 So in that neighborhood, even though there is sort of those two roads and the island divider in the middle, there is another access out of that neighborhood on Crescent Road. So there is sort of a second means of egress that's separate, that's number one. But number two, and I think what makes it work successfully in that neighborhood is that the width of the two roads and the island combined is 60 feet wide. It's 100 and like 65 feet long, which I think is shorter than that, and it's much wider. And so the grass strip in the middle is like 16 feet wide and each section of road is about 23 feet wide. And I was just paying a little bit more attention to that. And that's very useful for snow, when you have a lot of cars coming in and out. All the snow can be pushed into the middle that allows it to keep each roadway clear. But also whether there's snow plows or whether there's landscaping trucks, it can get very tight inside of those two roads or FedEx delivery trucks and that kind of thing. And I think to make that work successfully and take care of all the public safety issues, which are, you know, more than just emergency fire access and emergency police access, but just safe travel for the public, if it was, were wider, as it was done on Prospect Terrace, then I think a civil road.
I think we had discussed that earlier, the possibility of looking, having a divider there. We will.
But at 34 feet.
Requested, yeah.
Right, at 34 feet, it doesn't really work, you know, I think, like I said, it's 60 feet at.
Yeah.
And what's the length of that dead end? That, that first section of road?
That section of road, alright, so about 200.
220 feet.
How much?
220 feet.
220.
As I stated a few minutes ago, we're going to widen that up to 34 feet. My brief discussions with DPW regarding the island and all of that weren't favorable. So we can discuss more with them on that during definitive phase.
So you're going to do 34 though on that access? Not 32, not 32, you're doing 34.
30, whatever the, I think the minimum is 34.
34 is better.
Yeah, with 34, right, so it'll be 34 through the strip. And then we're transitioning down here before we get to the curve to 28. And I'll talk to DPW about whether we do some sort of a center island. And if there's enough room to do that and make the aisles wider, then we can take a look at that as well.
Yeah, I mean, there are advantages and it does look nicer for the, you know, for the entrance to any development like that. Okay, sounds good. I'll ask one more time, do I have any other questions or comments from the audience? Okay, third and final time. Any questions? Okay. Uh, okay, I think we, any questions from the board? I think we'll take, motion would be in order to close this, this meeting. Motion made and seconded to close the public meeting. All in favor, say aye. Both say no, motion carries.
Oh, no, this is just scheduled.
Okay, call to order.
Patrick Mueller, Fred Frederick, Carl Weiser, Tyler Bruce Tony. John Sosa.
Yeah.
Carl Vittoriosa.
Yeah.
Thomas Kerrigan.
A minute for previous meetings, you got them in your packet.
Second.
Well, okay. Motion made and seconded to approve, it's a minute sent out. Any additions to those? With comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries. Site plan modification approved for 290, 298 Central Street, AP Auto. Okay, this is to be scheduled?
Just scheduled for this meeting on the 3rd, so 17th.
17th?
September 17th.
September, yeah.
Is it open?
Yep.
6:30.
6:30. The motion made and seconded for a meeting on September 17th at 6:30. Any discussion? Hearing on the call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries. 3.2, site plan modification approved for research drive, process cooling.
These are both modifications, right?
Yes.
Obviously. Uh, September 17th at 6:45?
Second.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question? Sorry. Do you guys have any specific criteria that you utilize for determining whether something is a major or minor site plan?
Yes.
Is there something written?
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, these are modifications and this would be previously determined, okay? As a modification, if it require a, and that, that is our hearing. Okay, so it's a site plan hearing.
Right.
So, and then we will define.
But, but, yeah, so I, I think, if I could, John, so I don't know what the applicants have said to you if they think it's a, because right now, what, in my mind, we're scheduling these for public informational meetings, which means they'll go under, they'll have to present it as opposed to going under communications or old business, right? And then we determine if they want us to look at it as a minor modification. So I don't know what the applicant has said to you, saying, well, we just think this is minor, we don't have to present it. I mean, when it's, when they're site planned, they don't have to be advertised anyway, so.
I think they were submitted both as minors.
Okay.
And so from that standpoint, I just didn't see anything yet that seemed to speak to what the threshold was for minor.
How do you make the determination?
Well, I think, well, you know what I use is I use Bobrowski's Land Use Book because there's a thing in there and to determine whether it is or not. But right now, if we're scheduling them, I'm, we're scheduling them for as, to be, for them to re-present it rather than it just coming before us as a plan. So I don't know how they, if they consider them, I don't know, do we have the, do we have the information tonight? Otherwise.
It's going to be determined in the meeting.
Yeah, to be determined.
We can, yeah, but if.
If, if it comes into that meeting, either one of those, then we would have, if we thought it was a major modification, then we would just continue with the next meeting.
Okay, that makes sense, sure.
Hi, Bill the engineer and engineer, both, both projects. Quite frankly, there's no actual application for a modification. So we've been just using the form for regular submitted. I, I thought both of these were a minor modification that really probably could need, well, I think process cooling probably does, but it's a AP Auto product, I guess. But we typically, if we came here and submitted as a minor modification and you said, no, it's major, now we get kicked out of the week. So we just have been submitting them as modifications for review and going back to the meetings.
Alright, so if you don't have an objection to that, we'll, we'll do it that way. But with scheduling them for the 17th, then, then if you have no objection, so Christopher.
If we could, if we could look at the one for ANR, you guys may have decided it's not major. You know, that's really what happened on that one, there was a pole in the driveway we were going to access and National Bridge taking so long to move the pole, we just moved the driveway entrance.
I, I mean, if you have a plan for us to see now, we'll, we'll do that. But, but just, and it's just Christopher's understanding, usually like you'll look, what, usually what we do is we submit them. If the, if the applicant wants to submit the modification as a minor modification, we usually put them under communications.
Communication.
We'll look at them and we'll say, yeah, it is minor, we'll just vote on it now. If we don't, we'll put it on the list. So if Bill's being pretty candid, if he thinks one of them should be scheduled, we'll do the one on the 17th. But we can look at the, if it's just a matter of moving the pole, we'll take a look at it now and.
Thank you, dear.
I have.
Well, we can go, we can move, we can do the ANRs.
We'll go after the ANRs.
Does that make sense what I said?
Yeah.
That's usually how you've done it.
Yeah.
But I think what Christopher said.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Criteria, well, and I think that there is, but.
There is, we may not need to schedule it if it's going to happen.
Exactly.
We're about, we're about to go to schedule.
Well, that's a, yeah.
Well, okay.
He's just on AP Auto, so we'll, if, if we can, if we determine it's minor, we vote on it tonight, we'll just make the process cooling on at 6:30.
I'm just going to grab this one.
Is there anyone to present it or is that just?
Yeah, this is.
I wasn't, I usually just that at the end.
My name's David Leroy, I'm a land surveyor.
Okay, wait a minute. This is, I gotta, we jumped ahead. This is 3.3 and our approval for a 55 valve drive.
54 valve.
Fifty, 54, yeah. Double drive, go ahead.
Like I said, I'm David Leroy, I'm a land surveyor with Handy and Engineering. And the property we're subdividing is in the industrial zone. We're creating a lot two that has 15,947,000 square feet, 121 feet of frontage. That and lot one both exceed the area and, and frontage requirements.
Okay.
It's pretty clean, motion to endorse.
Okay, so you get the votes, you get to only set backs. Okay. I have a. Motion made and seconded to endorse, all in favor, say aye. Both say no, motion carries. 3.4, ANDR approval for 2931, Willard Street. Willard Street.
Here, Paul. Paul and I are here. I know. Tomato, tomato.
Goes upside hill.
When we present it?
So what are we doing here on this, this piece of property?
Uh, this one is a little different situation. There was two, two houses on the existing lot prior to the adoption of the subdivision control lot. Uh, so we're separating them under Chapter 41, Section 81H, definitions of the subdivision.
So you're saying that lot one is now going to, where the existing house number 29 is now going to have 24,127 square feet?
Yes.
And lot two, which is existing house 31, is 12.5, right?
12.5. It's 10.
50, 96.
And you have, they need 50 and 10,000 square feet.
We're right at 50 on the second one?
Yeah.
Motion to endorse.
Second.
Uh, these, do they have separate, oh, they have the driveway here, the driveway. Okay. Okay. I just wanted to make sure they weren't, show shared driveways. And our approval for twenty-nine thirty-one, Woollett Street. Motion is in order?
Oh, yeah, I did that, I think, Carol.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries. And our approval for Bush Pond Road. This subdivision's about fourteen times.
Try again.
I tried to look up the history of this, it was a challenge. You lose your mind.
That's why he's here.
And if you ask for the history of it, we'll be here until about twenty-five.
He's not allowed to speak.
So we're reconfiguring, um, lot four E, or two A and two B. Reconfiguring slightly. Uh, this is lot one dash there.
Four, where is it?
This is two B.
Two B is a...
Yeah.
Yeah, this four and two A.
Right, yeah, below, just somewhere.
Over this there, okay. Four A, three, two A, yep.
And at the same time, we're also reconfiguring lot C four B and C five B, or A, actually, you did Bs. Uh, the little lot line is shown there as well, and portions of those lots will become...
Could you do me a favor? Put, put, this is so confusing. Put it up on the board, one up on the board, and show us the different... Use one of these.
You can, you can write on it. Actually, mine's already highlighted.
So, in the front, this little piece of, of the frontage lot right here, is being, we're basically taking, creating a new lot line along the zoning line. So the portions of residential are going to go to the back, are the land portions of commercial stay at the front. So this little triangle here gets eliminated from this lot, make it four, C four B. This trapezoid gets eliminated from this lot, so that becomes lot C five B. Those two pieces get added to the land above, and that, this was lot four E one, I believe, that was the whole thing. So, what now is happening is that this lot is getting that land, so that lot changes. We're changing the lot line in this area here to be over in this area here, and we're creating another lot line in this area here. Okay? So, the, the purpose of this is solely for financing. It's not, it's not for, um, you know, creating another lot. It's for the construction financing. So right now, this project over here is under development, okay, with, with, uh, construction with one bank. This is another bank, it's going to end up with all the existing buildings and some additional units that, um, will come back and reconfigure on this area here. This land area here ends up with being basically just the two buildings, so there's a total of sixty, um, units on this one. And then there would be, um, at the end of the day, I think sixty-six units on the backside here. There's two, there's two, two, two. So, the purpose of the, of the line here is that the financing company is either going to be the same company that is financing this, or the company that ended financing this. So this piece, we have a note in the plan that is not to be considered building lot, not to be constructed on, until it's merged with either this piece or this piece, in order to get a frontage. Okay, so this is basically a parcel in the back that wouldn't be...
So there's a notation on the plan right now?
Yep, it's, um, the lot, it's, um... Yeah, right here, lot four E two B is to be next to either lot four D two or lot four E two A prior construction.
Prior construction, but it doesn't say it's not a building.
Well, it's not, because it doesn't have frontage.
Frontage has to be created.
Right, so in other words, the, the objective is this will be the last piece of the building. And it might be, actually, it may not be the last piece, because of the fact that if this company agrees with the financing, gets merged over here, it may, it could be one of the next ones that's built, because it then will have frontage. But whenever it goes, uh, for financing, for final, when it goes to construction, it has to be, um, you know, frontage. At that point, we'll come in with another plan, either eliminating this line or eliminating that one. But in order to do the financing on this piece and this piece alone separately, um, it just had to be taken out of it.
How close are we to the agreed to apartments on the original?
Exactly.
Do you have any idea?
What do you mean?
Do you have it?
Yes. The last, yeah, we haven't changed the number of units.
We haven't done anything different.
Yes.
Okay.
All we're doing is configuring the lots for different banks to finance different lots. They, the bank needs frontage.
Okay.
Yeah, eventually, these, these lot lines will, could, it could change.
Eventually, it's going to be one owner, one bank, when it's all finished. But each construction loan is a separate...
Okay.
That'll...
Well, yeah.
We don't know who's going to finance, it could be the, the one that's existing one, or it could be the one that does the next phase.
Okay.
Followed it.
I move to endorse, second.
I have a motion made and seconded to endorse. Do we have any further questions? Hearing and honor call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries.
I move to return to three point one.
Three point two.
Three point one.
Three point?
It's in Central Street, right, Bill?
Yes. What I can do is throw it up on the board, go for it.
Okay.
Thanks, Stephanie, for doing that.
Okay, uh, shoot, I'm going to look at sheet two. Versus, the cover, the cover sheet doesn't count. So you're on sheet one.
Now, distinct the pole.
And I'll, I'll borrow that highlighter back again. Um, so anyways, the entrance to the project was going to be right in here, and it's an existing pole. Okay? Um, it's been very difficult getting National Bridge to get out there, uh, whatever gets going on. So, we're basically taking the entrance and moving it from here to here, that's really the change. We do end up losing one part, one parking space, but it's what ends up being the, one of the display spaces. So we went from five display spaces to four, so that's really the only change.
So no required parking is being lost?
No required parking is being lost.
Okay, I'm sorry, Bill, can you show the, the, the change in the entrance or ingress?
It was here.
Okay.
Now it's here.
Yeah.
And where was the pole?
Pole's right there.
Oh, still there.
Still there, that's why.
The pole is still there.
They're just moving out of the way, you don't have to move it now.
Right, so we need ten parking spaces, we have four here, five here, one here, these are re-display spaces, but four display spaces, there was originally five.
What's required?
Ten.
And we still have ten?
Yes.
Alright, so I, I move, I move that that's considered a minor modification.
Motion made and seconded, in terms of minor modification? Okay, first we have to take, yeah, I, I have to have a, a motion made on someone's...
I've made it.
So you made a modification, but I have a, okay, let's... I accept that, make your mo, made and seconded. We now have a schedule for September seventeen.
We're going to vote on it right now. It's considered a minor modification, so we're going to move to approve the modification now.
I, I have to take the schedule off first.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry.
Just parliamentary procedure that we have to follow. Okay, so, I need somebody that was on the prevailing side...
Make a motion to rescind, uh...
To rescind the original motion for three point one.
I can't imagine making a date for three point one on nine seventeen at six thirty to strike it.
Okay, I have a motion made.
Second.
Seconded on that. To reconsider. A motion to reconsider. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries. Now Carol's motion is in order.
Correct. I move to consider, um, the, um, proposed site plan modification as a minor modification.
A minor modification.
Second.
I have a motion made and seconded on that. We've looked at it already, so I'll ask for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no.
No.
Motion carries. Okay, a third vote's required.
Make a motion to approve the minor, the modification.
I have a motion made and seconded to approve the modification. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries. Yeah.
Um, so we have...
Now, how about...
On September seventeenth, we have research drive at six forty-five.
Correct.
Motion to, uh...
Amend.
To amend that, the motion made.
To six thirty.
To six thirty. I have a motion made and seconded to change process cooling from six forty-five to six thirty. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries.
Um, so in the case of the site plans and modification, how do you guys deal with that in terms of endorsing that amended plan? Do you re-sign the new version?
I think it's just a letter that the planning department sends out stating that the planning board has reviewed and considered a minor modification and approved it.
And then refers to that updated plan with the new date.
That's correct.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, old business, continuing preliminary subdivision, approval for Woollett Street. Uh, we've looked at it, we've looked at the plan, it's a preliminary plan, go down to one, one roadway. There were some suggestions to look at, uh, the road width, uh, or to a divided road. Uh, are there any other recommendations? Uh, we have one of the department heads' conditions if we want to, uh, keep on record? Anything else?
I just want to make sure that the, the road width is thirty-four, I feel like the first two hundred sixty feet, roughly.
Well, it's either that or divided.
Oh, no, no, understood.
It says preliminary.
I know it's preliminary.
And they're going to come back with a divided.
But it's for the first two sixty?
Thirty-four for the roughly two, yeah, two, two twenty is the center of the other, and a second to go past, that's roughly two fifty, two fifty.
Okay, just want to make sure that we're okay in there with the thirty-four and four outside, let's try to, hopefully.
Okay, well, that will be dealt definitely.
Under definitive.
We'll take a look at it.
Oh, under definitive.
Yep.
Okay. Um, here, here we're now, a motion would be in order to accept the, uh... Yeah.
The plan.
The, yeah, the, the preliminary subdivision plan for Woollett Street, uh, with department recommendations and comments. Motion made and seconded, I can second, so. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries. New business, communications. Maintenance plan for one forty-five Central Street. Uh, this is what we had requested, uh, to show the, um... Uh, snow storage areas and, uh, the dividing and how they're going to maintain this property. Um...
Six point one?
Yep. That's this here. Do I have a representative of someone here?
Uh, I'm attorney Richard Kalamowski.
Okay.
This is Julia Capone, she's the potential purchaser of the lot.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
You were, you were in last meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, fine. Um, yeah, it'll work, this works for me.
I lost my copy.
Okay, let's look at mine. It, it highlights the parking, this is on the original drawing, and it, it shows... Now, you gave us a, a landscape plan before.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
There's not much there, but yes.
There wasn't much, so...
We approved this, right?
We approved, this has been approved.
This is the meaning of this.
And what we requested was to show the snow storage and the maintenance plan and how they're going to deal with the, the, between the different...
Okay.
Uh, butters, okay? And, and how the different areas would be taken care of. So that they come up with a basic, uh, maintenance agreement or plan. Um, this looks alright to me. I wasn't asking for anything really fancy.
It isn't.
That's good. And we're in support.
But it works.
It works.
This was done pro se, informally. Now it's very navel-y of them.
So, okay.
And he's agreeable to this?
Let's see.
Okay.
Yeah, she is, and she's the...
Let's see, let's see.
Okay. That's it, this is just the maintenance plan. So, our request was that they come back to us with the maintenance plan, so all we've got to do is accept this maintenance.
Yeah, so I move, I move to accept it.
Yeah.
Correct.
I move to accept it as a reasonable maintenance plan.
Okay, I have a motion made and seconded to accept the, uh, maintenance plan as presented. Any, any discussion? Hearing and honor call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries.
Thank you, thank you.
Here's that, good luck.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Let's go each other in person.
See you. We said the same thing. Teach you guys to...
Okay, information, new view joint meeting for city council, nine twenty-four eighteen. Um, we need a quote for that. Uh, what this is, is a, is a pilot program that Kristen and I actually started, uh, through the state, with state funding, and they're taking abandoned buildings. So buildings that are not, there's no one living in them now, we don't think. On their day, they may be, uh, and there's money being given to the cities and towns through this program, and we're part of the pilot to go through and rehab these buildings and turn them back into, into residences. And this, versus CBG, which might lead to fix a roof or stairs or, uh, minor modifications, this is a totally... And they take in a building, city takes it over, or the corporation, it's a separate corporation, they take it over and, uh, they totally renovate the building. So it requires, the way it's set up, it requires a joint meeting between us and the city council for a presentation. Okay, and that's the date that's been scheduled by the city council.
What day of the week is that?
It's Monday.
It's a Monday.
Okay. Oh, so they give, new view is giving the presentation.
New view is giving the presentation, correct.
So, okay. I didn't start to get in touch with all of this.
Yes. Yeah, we did, but I just wanted to bring it up so everybody understood what it was and what we have in it that day and why. Little background, it's something new.
Okay.
Okay, two weeks from now, we want a raise.
Um, Tom, do you know who you're going to attend?
Monday, twenty-fourth.
It's the week, it's the weekend after I meet.
Yeah.
It's two weeks from now.
John, can you attend?
I think so.
So I can let them know?
I'm in the pool right now, yeah.
So everybody can attend?
Yeah.
Yeah, so then we have your four.
Oh, so seven of them...
Well, even if we have four of us that support.
We just need a four.
So I'll let them know, and then I'll, once I know the time, I'll let everybody know.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay, next one, six point three, schedule a public hearing for city council petition, two point nineteen, Gell faculty, request to amend the chapter twenty-two revised on the title zoning, article one, section twenty-two, that's for definitions yard sale by adding application permitting requirements for all yard sales. Uh, what they want to do here is, right now, it's scheduled through the building department. Uh, they want to change that to the police department. So, uh, so we've got to schedule a hearing for them.
Okay, so, uh...
Nine seventeen.
Nine seventeen at six forty.
Yeah.
Really, yeah.
Okay.
For second, yeah.
Really, yeah, so probably.
Um, what we hear...
She's got to get the application of the yard sale. I know some people set up every week. I know some people set up every week.
There there are some people, we've had, there's one guy on lot, there's a couple people on lot from the. And that's where this one from. Okay, Gail, and there's one guy on Main Street, he sets up, he has a business.
Alright.
Okay, it's not a yard sale anymore. And if you go over there and look at his stuff, it's all stuff that.
We'll talk about it.
He bought it from somebody else, they put it, you know? So it's a way of controlling it. So motion made for September seventeenth at six forty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries. City council petition plan board representation for three dash nineteen. Claire Emfree, that request to adopt temporary moratorium regarding recreation, recreational marijuana in the city of Limser, including definition and purpose. I talked to Claire on this today and as it turns out, this was an interim motion that was put on the docket in case the original motion for medical, uh for recreational marijuana wanted to pass. That motion has gone through the third reading and has passed the third reading. So there's no need for this motion. Okay, so, so we we just take and. Yeah, we just, we we just take no action required. Okay?
Okay, next. Thought the petition was denied by legal affairs.
It was originally.
And we just got a.
But that's another one.
See, it was denied. So, okay, no action.
We 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 have to show it on our thing.
Yeah, no, I understand.
It was denied, it was, it's been a hole. But I just said, okay, I would take care of it that way. And it's just no, no further action is required.
So the moratorium has been denied.
The moratorium has been denied. We now have, we have ordinance for recreational marijuana in the city. And medical marijuana. Okay? We've gotta set up a meeting, standard condition of plan of board approvals. Um this is uh on uh our regulations. I think Chris talked about that.
A lot of decisions in many communities, whether it be site plan subdivision, special permit, they often have what are called standard conditions. And those standard conditions are the same for every single application. They're just a series of common sense things that, you know, in many cases, we all expect that the applicant's gonna do that anyway. But this puts it down on paper and makes, at least for some applicants that don't understand the process or want to understand the process, it gives them an understanding that number one, things like they shall, you know, obviously, this this approval, you know, does not in any way affect you having to get permits from state federal regulations, authorities and things like that. Site cleanup, like the site, you know, once completed, shall be cleaned up and brushed clean. Um you know, all, for example, um you know, best management practices for storm water shall be removed and things of that nature. So they're just a series, and and you may have had them in the past, I don't know. But I've actually collected about um seven or eight different examples from other communities. Some of them close by, some of them, but still all in Massachusetts. And if you're interested, I can kind of pull those together and try to come up with a, a set unique for us that makes sense based on just reading those. For your, at least just for your eyeballs next time, if that's a difference to you.
Yeah, any fun. Yeah, cause we get the, most of it, I think most of that's covered in our subdivision regulations. Okay?
Right, so you're putting it on one spot.
But in the, put it in one spot and give a, make sure everybody has a sequence of uh.
Right.
Operation. I thought we'd attempted to do something like this in the past.
Yeah, that I have one point. No, we didn't have it at one point.
I thought we did.
It could be attached to like every approval, so you have all the standard.
Yeah.
Cause when he goes to write it, it's just easier.
I thought we had done something with Kate Bush.
We did. Uh I think it was private, okay?
Maybe it was gonna. Maybe.
Well, I'll I'll dig any.
Yeah, I did.
Do some digging.
And it was almost like, and then there was a hot two guide as well as, you know.
Right.
Learning the processes.
There was a whole sequence that we'd gone through.
Yeah.
Like, like two or three, like I'm talking ten.
I would appreciate it.
Fif- fifteen years ago, maybe more.
I'll I'll take a look for that and I'll add it to what I've collected already and I'll.
Yeah.
But I'll, I'll bring all the different communities to you as well.
Yeah, you can find it, okay.
Yeah.
Every part. The other thing is that uh I had talked to Kristen about this last year and we did, we got tied up in the marijuana thing, so it never got done. Is we haven't looked at our fee schedule for, and we're supposed to look at that periodically. So that's the other thing is that we're gonna put together.
I'll be honest, I'm gonna do that.
About ten years ago.
Uh I think it was shorter than that.
Shorter.
Yeah, I think maybe five years ago we changed it.
Five, five, six years?
Yeah.
Which was time.
Yeah, let's look at it again and.
We'll look at it.
We have to raise anything.
We need a raise.
One of the things that Stephanie's done recently is she came up with, she did some research. And um had Kristen help with that or just you?
I'm the moderator.
Moderator, regional planning commission, I guess Glenn and John helped with it too. But what it is, is a, is a table that shows all the communities, I think the twenty-two communities, and every second fee comparing each community.
Okay, great.
So we can bring that to you guys next time if you're interested. Just out of curiosity, how, where do we stand in those twenty-two communities?
We're on the low side?
We on the low side?
We're right smack dab in the middle, I think. Uh but there's some things that, like modifications, we don't charge for and a lot of people charge for those, so I don't know.
Uh huh.
Well, that's like Bill said, there's no applica- there's no application for that.
We could, but they could be. Lock one up for you guys.
But they could be. Yeah. Yeah.
We gotta raise.
Yeah, we gotta get a raise for that.
I want ten fifty. I want twenty bucks a year.
Well, and maybe, but maybe that's where we can give the director some discretion because if, are we gonna really charge them? I don't know how much, how much is a fee now for, to file a site plan, I don't even know. Or I um.
Hundred and fifty.
Are we gonna, are we gonna make them pay a hundred and fifty or seventy, seventy-five just to move a pole?
What's, what's the high of that?
Right, like. Like. You could say that a minor modification is no charge or, and major modification is maybe fifty percent of the.
What of the other?
Yeah, and, and maybe, but then if you, you, uh your, your office is then gonna have to determine if it's a minor modification or not.
Yeah.
But I, but then we can still present, it can still be presented to us to endorse it that way, I suppose.
And if, if you utilize Bobrovsky's criteria, that'd make it.
Yeah, I, you know, and I'm still trying to fi- maybe I dreamt it, I'm still trying to find it. I can't find it under the site plan. I know I've read it somewhere that we have like discretion to determine if it's minor of, I don't know if it was a case or something else, so I'll have, I'll find it.
I don't remember he was, and he got it, but.
Well, I just remember.
Based on what it was.
Well, like that is like.
Common sense. So ju- just to let you know that we will preliminarily put that on the next agenda, but we'll want to filter through the mayor first before we do that.
Oh, yeah, I'll do that. Uh correspondence received regarding four, five, six, Litfield Street.
I really liked it. It's about time.
Well, that's, you know, it's a letter, it's a, we got the, all we can say is we received the communication. And uh we can put it in the file. Uh the case is closed.
Well, you know.
This is on the cell tower.
And that wasn't in my packet and I'm not.
No, it wasn't, it was uh, it was on the table.
Oh, I didn't.
No.
It was in the packet.
Oh, it was, yeah, yeah, it was.
Oh, I didn't.
So anyway, but the mayor's saying he's gonna look into the possibility of maybe applying taxes to the Eagles. I like that for him.
Yeah.
Profit, right, but now they're pissed.
The, the, the cell tower company that picked that up.
Of course. See, the cell tower.
My taxes.
Well, at least.
Yeah, I mean, they.
I like the letter, I like the letter.
I like the letter, that's good, it brought a lot of information on, you know, but it was a concern to the neighborhood and uh um we got overruled by the uh federal government for that moment.
They will. It's cause we're not a site.
That's good, I like his idea.
Me too.
Okay, we got a director's report.
Alright, we don't want these every week though, Christopher.
No.
I'm teasing, it's a longstanding joke.
You know, once a quarter, it's pushing it. Well, the, the intention is that you'd get it uh with your packets for every meeting. And this is a very small and short one, as it should be. But if there was a, a new case, a new site plan, a new subdivision, um this report would, would basically be fleshed out with all of the review from the planning department. So um you know, if you like the format, if you like the way it's structured, you know, what I've tried to do is give you links at the start so you can jump down to a section if you wanna do that. Um but you know, it's really intended to just talk about everything that's happened in the department over the last two weeks to a month. And also give a full review related to whatever applications are up for discussion that week.
Okay.
It was good.
Yeah, that's great.
It's good to me. Um I don't think we have to go into a, what, just wanna, Chris is here, it's a little, I have, I think we have five applications for um, Chris is a, was, you know, appointed as a temporary director.
Interim.
Interim. Okay? And uh and we got uh.
Okay.
Okay.